Meeting of November 15, 2023. I'll have the board introduce ourselves.
Marge Coney.
Liz Banks.
Diane Trapasso.
Tom Welch.
And this is Josh.
Where is he?
He's not on yet and we can't do the public hearing.
Oh, here he is. Hi, Josh.
Josh.
Hold on. All right, now talk. Okay, hi, Josh. Welcome. Okay, all right. The agenda is approval of the minutes of October 18, 2023. At 6:35, we have a public hearing for a special permit. 505 Main Street. STL 505 LLC is requesting a special permit to raise the existing building, remove the southeast foundation, and repour and rebuild in the same location and to expand the pre-existing non-conforming parking lot. 6:45, we have a determination. 82 Paradise Lane. Glenn and Kathleen Ellis, the applicant, is requesting a determination to raise the existing building and build a new house. Town plan or update? All business, new business. So let's start with approval of the minutes of October 18. Has everyone gone through it? Any corrections or anything?
I don't know.
Would I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 18, 2023?
Motion.
Second. Okay, any discussion? The vote? All in favor? Okay, all righty. And Josh also. Let's see. We still have a few more minutes. Maybe I can just, yes. We have Mary Ann Thorpe, who is returning to Zoning Board of Appeals, and she is going up for approval. And we have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on Monday, November 20. So can we, Marge, I know you can't attend. Liz?
I can.
Okay, myself, okay. Josh, can you come to the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday night?
Yes, I'll be there in person.
Okay, all right, good. So we'll be there.
And I already expressed my...
It'll be good to have Mary Ann.
Happy to have her back. She was very capable and very minasty to the board.
Okay, we still have two minutes. Old business, do we have anything new, anything old?
No. All right, no old business, no new business.
No, nothing. Jean, do you have anything that's...
No, I don't. I guess, well, one little thing. So the Planning Board received an application for a telecommunications tower to be erected at 92 Stallion Hill Road. And the property has insufficient frontage. So the attorney that filed, we had a difference of opinions on the appropriate zoning path that he needed to take. I did have a meeting with town council today, and he does need to file for a variance. But John Eichman indicated it's perfectly appropriate to start the planning board process first because for a variance, for anything to do with a telecommunications tower, what you need to know is if they're filling a gap, a coverage gap. And so that's the criteria that you apply with a variance for a telecommunications tower rather than the typical shaped soils and topography. So the Planning Board will be opening the public hearing on December 19. We've just done the legal notice for that. I am not sure if they will file in time to be on your December 20 meeting or if it will be the January meeting. From start to finish of that process, we have 100 days. Under the federal statute, we have 150 days from date of filing for the planning board process to conclude. So I sent out a request for quotations for a peer reviewer today that specializes in radio frequency studies. And he will provide reports to the Planning Board and to the Zoning Board. I did it as a dual peer review because we will need that input for the zoning board process as well. So I think it would be just fine if it's in January.
Yeah.
There will be a balloon test conducted. I'm working to set that up. And that will be posted as a Planning Board balloon test. But I will invite all of you, let you know the time. Diane, you've done this with me before, and Liz, you've done this too. We just drive to different locations and see where it might be visible. So I'll keep you all up to date on that.
Okay, good.
And what properties have you...
92 Stallion Hill Road.
That's right off of Fisk Hill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, oh. It's if you go up past like the village that way.
Yep, I know. Okay. 6:35. Okay. Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing for the special permit for 505 Main Street. Liz, do you read the legal notice?
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 15, 2023, at 6:35 PM at the Town Hall located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Massachusetts 01566. And, or by virtual means, if circumstances warrant, in accordance with the applicable law and the application of STL 505 LLC for the property at 505 Main Street. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Article XV...
16.
Huh?
16. Article 18.
18, Section 300-18.2. And a finding pursuant to Article...
15.
15, Section 300-15.2A of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter pre-existing non-conforming use or structure in Article 16, Section 300-16.2 motor vehicle parking for the property located at 505 Main Street. The application is proposing to raise the existing building and remove the southeast foundation and repour and rebuild the same location and to expand the pre-existing non-conforming parking lot as shown on the plans and supporting documentation provided. The applicant proposes to change the use of the property from a restaurant and three apartments to eight artist live/work studios as allowed by the zoning bylaw. The proposed request can be viewed at www.sturbridge.gov/zoningboardofappeals-pages/recentfilings or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Board at 508-347-2508 or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to hear, to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online or via the Towns On-Demand Video Broadcast or via cable television, Channel 191. It is the intent to have this public hearing in person. However, if circumstances warrant, the board may choose to hold the hearing via virtual or hybrid, in-person and virtual means. In the event of a virtual or hybrid meeting, notice and a link shall be posted on the ZBA website. Please note that the meeting/hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Diane Trapasso, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thanks. Okay. Staff has reviewed this. The fire department is indicating that clear access to the fire department connection must be provided. Conservation has indicated that filing must occur and that waivers will be required for the 25 feet, no disturb, and 50 feet, no permanent structure requirements. They still have to go to Planning Board for site plan. And I don't know, Jean, you want to speak now or shall we have the applicant discuss the proposal first?
I can just update you as to where we are. So they are scheduled with the Planning Board for December 19 for a public hearing for site plan approval. The artist studios are permitted use in that district. And the lot is conforming, however, the existing structure is non-conforming. This is, this board and the Planning Board approved a similar project several years back when it was going to be the Thai Orchid. And that project was never constructed. This project requires a slightly smaller parking lot, and access will be directly through this parcel. There will be no shared parking with the law office next door. As with the other plan, all the parking will be contained on site. Also, the applicant is filing on Friday with the Conservation Commission and is expected to go before that committee on December 7.
Excuse me, December 7?
December 7.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Saint-Lavon.
Right number correctly.
Matt St. Laurent for STL 505. As Jean mentioned, we're proposing a artist studio project consisting of eight units at 505 Main Street. We're going to have plans to demo the existing structure, which is severely distressed, and then rebuild new. We will be making some structural improvements to the southeast corner of the foundation by repouring that and then squaring off the building towards the southwest foundation corner. The non-conforming issues are the current setbacks for the property line, which on the side is around three feet, and the frontage, which is around 12 feet versus the required 25. We'll also be expanding the parking lot to 16 spots, but that'll also be non-conforming with being three feet off of the parking property setback versus the 10 feet requirement.
Do you have questions, Marge?
You still haven't entered into contract with the present owners. Is that correct?
No, we have.
All right.
Yes.
And I imagine that that's all dependent on conservation and on...
Correct.
The site plan review and everything. All right, I just wanted to make sure that nothing changed with that. And... Going in the same footprint.
That's correct.
Now, Jean, with the nine compact cars, if I remember, they were like nine by something?
Yes, they are actually, there is a parking. They're right here on page C102. The compact car parking spaces are nine by 16.
No, I know, but the size is what I...
Right, nine by 16.
That's what I sort of remember.
Yep.
And when we say the seven regular...
Those are nine by 18.
Are we talking that that can accommodate a suburban or a van or something, 12 by...
That's our typical space, is nine by 18.
Okay, that's...
In the commercial tourist district. On, say Hobbs Brook, it would be 10 by 20. But in the commercial tourist district, they're allowed to use nine by 18 because of the very limited lot sizes.
Right, that's for the compact, but the other is...
No, the regular is nine by 18. The compact is nine by 16.
Oh, the length only changes.
Right.
What if you go in there with a van?
You can fit in a nine by 18. I can fit my big boat in there.
Yeah, all right, a little tight, but okay. All right. Let's see.
Liz, we can come back to Marge. Do you have any...
No, no, go ahead.
Okay.
Do we have a signed application? Because the one that we have is not.
Yes, we have authorization from the property owner, and there's an original in the application now. When it came in, we were awaiting the owner's signature, but we do have that now in the file, in the application, in the file. We have the original.
And then I just have one other question. I was looking at the plans and on the first one, it says living room slash kitchen, first and second floor. Does that mean that, are you saying...
Those are identical for the first.
Is it identical one above it?
Yep.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that's what you meant.
It's hard to see some of the print on it.
All right, you can pick up...
Josh, do you have any questions?
Is there an existing parking lot or is the proposed parking lot net new?
I need subtitles.
There is an existing parking lot. There's also existing lot in the rear of the property, which is accessible through a walking path or a driveway entrance through the abutting property. The layout actually kind of remains the same to what's existing with just improving and expanding some of the parking lot area.
Is there an movement with the abutting property for access to the rear lot?
Uh, no.
Josh, the access would remain through this lot. You would access the rear through this lot. So there would be no need for an agreement with the abutting property.
I know, I can't hear.
And I usually can hear grass growing, but I'm having a little trouble hearing here.
You're having trouble hearing?
A little bit. It's...
Me too, I can't hear you and I can't hear him.
I can, and usually I can hear very well.
Well, this is only for the TV. So I'll try to speak a little louder. So the parking lot in its entirety will be accessed through this property. If you notice on the side of the American Legion, that's actually a proposed grass strip and plantings on that side. So with this proposal, there is no need for a cross connection from the neighboring property.
Are you good, Josh?
Yes, I'm good.
I just had a couple of questions. So you did say it's a total tear down, right?
Yes.
Total rebuild of the existing space. Now, on the images here, what is facing the road?
For the architecturials or the site?
Yeah.
The architectural, you want me to just point out to you?
Yeah, I was just trying to see what, I was trying to figure out which one was the road facing.
It's the north elevation, but that will be changing. They're still working on some updates to that.
Okay, on the north, right.
Yeah. No, they're still, they're still working on some updates. And they'll have the final architecturials and renderings for the Planning Board hearing. So this rendering was also submitted with the Planning Board application. But we've all already been in conversation about the architecture from Main Street, that it should be, you know, look more like a front facade rather than a side facade from Main Street.
I was just concerned it was this, and then I was like, that's, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
We're not here to discuss that, but I was...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So they will be working on that before the Planning Board hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anybody else have any other questions or anything else we want to go over?
Well, the memos that have to be discussed and the different, there were some questions by different...
Sorry, Marge, I can't hear you either.
No, about the memos that we received from DPW and the building and that there was some things, yeah, that...
Those would be conditions?
Conditions.
Well...
I mean, all other, all other, I mean, all other permits have to be...
No, I know, all the permits and everything, and that goes into our approval or disapproval tonight. Okay. But I just wanted to make sure that the proponent was aware of all of these things.
Department memos. Yes, they've all been provided to the applicant.
That's what I just wanted to confirm because since things are up in the air, you know?
No, everything's been provided to the applicant with a copy of my report as well.
Trying to make sure of that.
Anybody else have any other concerns or questions or anything? Need any more information from Jean or anything? Then can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Josh? Okay. Okay, now we need a motion to find...
Anybody want to do it? I'll defer to anybody who...
Marge, do you...
I'll do it.
I was going to try it.
All right, you want to, go ahead.
You want to attempt?
You correct me if I do something wrong.
You're on your own, honey.
All right.
No, I'm only kidding you.
I make a motion to find pursuant to Article 15, Section 300-15.2A of the zoning bylaws to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure for the property located at 126 Southbridge Road.
The property is 505...
Wait a minute. Is that's not the address of the...
No, that's the owner's address. It's 505 Main Street.
What's the address of the place?
505 Main.
505 Main Street.
Main Street.
At 505 Main Street. I think it's not on here. Anyway... The raising and re, of the building and re, and new construction will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Would I leave out?
Quite a bit.
I think, I think we need to add Article 16, Section 300 hyphen 16...
Dash 16.2.
Point 2 because of the motor vehicle, the parking. So...
We also have to mention the proposal by the applicant. STL 505 LLC is the proponent.
Exactly.
You don't need to add the 16.2. Parking requirements fall under the Planning Board.
That'll be part of it. All right, so we don't need that.
With the address of...
We do. And raising, rebuilding the existing structure.
I found it. Good.
But we have to also that they're going to remove the southeast foundation and repour it in the same location and expand...
The pre-existing non-conforming parking lot.
Right. And a change of use from the restaurant?
I think...
Change of use, right?
No, we don't need the change of use. Because the use proposed is a permitted use in the district. So the use is not non-conforming.
But we have to add...
We're adding three, the three apartments and the eight others. That's not in the finding?
It's not necessary because it's still a permitted use in the district, but you can absolutely add that in your motion.
Well, see, I always do it another way, but go ahead.
I think...
Did we just cover it all, just for the findings?
I think the finding is what we need to express, that it's not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood.
I said that part already.
And the proposal isn't because they're actually enhancing the neighborhood by site and landscaping. And it's consistent with the master plan, with a mixture of mixed use. So I think...
Well, that's why I said that. We usually itemize everything in it because when we, we had to go through that ATE on the finding all the time. And I think you have to mention all of this.
Right, and I think that kind of gets it all in.
And that, of course, and what, that was the rest of it. That will not, right. And then we have now, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's...
You want me to mention each one?
No, no, I don't think we have to. I think we can summarize it also too. I think...
So I'm just, so this is the last one that we did. And I just use the same one. Whatever you think needs to be added, you can add it.
I think, I think, I think we're good now. I think that's, that's it. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the find? Josh? Okay, we're good, unanimous. Okay, now I need a motion to grant the special permit.
Well, no one's going to want to try now.
Do we...
You want me to try again?
Do you want me to read it and then something can... Okay. What I would like is a motion to grant the special permit pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2 parentheses 2 to STL 505 LLC for the property located at 505 Main Street to demolish the existing, remove the southeast foundation, and repour and rebuild in the same location and to expand the pre-existing non-conforming parking lot according to all the plans and documentation submitted with the following conditions, which I think we should, that all construction and site improvements shall be in conformance with plans submitted and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. All state and local zoning bylaws, building codes, and regulations must be adhered to. All other necessary permits must be obtained prior to the start of construction and an as-bill must be provided to the planning department. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Josh? Excellent, unanimous.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
I still remember the name of Five Leaves.
So we don't have to do... Did you do this?
We don't have to do all that because it's, what we say now is everything, all plans and documentation submitted. And Janey always lists them and everything. So I think that's...
May I ask what's happening?
Maybe, maybe, old business, we can kind of go over, maybe motions, since you're here, Jean, maybe that might be a good idea.
Sure.
Okay. Next, we have the determination for 82 Paradise Lane.
And what we didn't put in was who the plans were submitted by for...
It's already, it's...
I asked that question and it's covered.
Actually, it's covered in all plans and documentation submitted.
Usually, I don't know.
We're going to discuss it on the old business after this one.
Mr. Jalbert, would you like to present?
Okay. There's a condition recommended by the DPW. She reviewed the plan you dropped off, the revised plan. So just a standard condition, okay?
All right?
Yeah, we got it in time for her to review it today, so...
Hi, Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering. I'm here to represent the owners of the property located at 82 Paradise Lane, which is Glenn Ellis. I don't, do you want to say something first? You want me to just go?
I think you're good to go.
Okay. In the process of this, we submitted the plans and elevations and buildings to the town...
Can't hear.
To the town for approval. And then what happened is that we got a letter from the town... from the town relative to corrections that they'd like to see. And then one from the DPW was that they turn around location of the driveway to prevent the backing onto the Paradise Lane, which we have, uh, put on the plan, the turnaround for the, uh, parking, which is located on the left-hand side of the property where, with the trees, I think you can see where it is. Can you see it? Jean?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was the first thing that they wanted. The, the next one was to, um, to go with the conservation for, for approval. We have, um, gone before the conservation for, for a public hearing. The public hearing was passed and an order of conditions was issued by the Conservation Commission, uh, on the, uh, the twenty-third. The, um, water and sewer, there's the E-one pump that is, is existing on the property itself. And what it was is that the, uh, the sewer department wanted the location of the sewer line, um, in the property on, on the plan and the gate on the plan, which has been placed on that. I think you can see it. Can you see it, Jean?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's there, and also, the, uh, they wanted the material on, on the, uh, line going in. It was, it's actually a one and a half inch line. It's going from the E-one pump, which is down near the, uh, part of the lake. What we're doing is we're taking the E-one pump, not moving it, or the line going from the E-one pump to the connection onto Paradise Lane, was stay, basically gonna stay as is, it is installed. And the only thing that we'd be doing is taking a four-inch line from the house, as shown on the plan, to connect to the E-one pump, which will be pumped to the street itself. The gate valve and the line itself will not be changed or altered. The, the line itself is one and a half inch sewer line by the town. It's roughly five and a half feet deep, uh, which means that any construction on the house itself or the foundation itself would be above that excavation line of the sewer. Therefore, it would not be altered. It would stay as is. The, um, line itself will be marked in the field at the time of construction. The other thing was the fire department wanted the, uh, thing that was, we mentioned that we're going to make the house more energy efficient, which we are, as per the building code. The house will be more energy efficient. However, he alluded to the fact that he wanted to know if there would be, uh, an electrical connection for a vehicle on, within the house. Talking to the owner, he said, no, he will not do that. Also, will he be connecting to, uh, any of the solar power for the house itself? He said, no, he's not going with the solar, solar power either. He's gonna stay just with the regular electrical. So, the house itself will have a standard, uh, two-hundred amp service, as done in the normal house. The, uh, heating and air conditioning and everything else will be as per Mass State Code. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The, the, um, property itself, basically, the house itself was, was, um, located, basically, let's... Let's see, basically, let's see, it's... Was, was basically located within the, the setback of the, the lake itself, which was within twenty-five feet. What we've done is we've moved the house back to be beyond the fifty-foot limit of the, uh, site itself, way up to the, near Paradise Lane. And the reason for that is that the Conservation Commission says that any construction, altering of a foundation or building of a building is new construction, and they wanted no construction within the fifty-foot setback limit, which we did. We put the building beyond the fifty-foot setback, and it was approved. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Tom, question? Josh, do you have any questions?
Marge?
Uh, just a couple. We're going to have that shed removed.
The what?
The shed.
That's leaving.
It's gonna, well, that, anything that brings non-conforming down to more conforming on fourth. So, that's, that's a plus, as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, you're having the pervious, uh, material put in, in the driveway and that.
Right. It's all, it's all crushed stone, the driveway is.
All crushed stone?
Right.
Okay. I, I, I didn't... I couldn't really tell whether it was crushed stone or some other kind of pervious material. All right, that's a good thing. And, uh, I think... That's about it. And you said the turnaround wouldn't...
The turnaround actually is located on the, uh, the southerly side of the property adjacent to the, the street itself.
Okay. That's my questions, that's about it.
Liz, do you have questions?
Yeah, what's the difference between, um...
Go ahead.
Revision four and revision five?
Is what?
What is the difference between revision four and revision five?
The piping and the turnaround.
The, the thing, the thing is, what happened, revision...
There is the turnaround.
Revision five was...
Can you show on your mouse where the turnaround is?
Revision five was actually reflecting the comments from the, a letter from the, uh, plant, uh, butter, the fire department, police, and water and sewer. That's the revision five. So, the revision five actually shows you the, uh, sewer line connection and also the turnaround, which is on the, uh, upper side of the road, which is by the town requirements.
Can you zoom in on that section, Janay?
I don't see on hand.
Sorry?
This is precaution drive. I don't see the difference.
See the little job up there? The little square?
That, up there?
Yes.
Right there?
Right there.
That's, that's been added?
That's been added. And then the piping from the E-one pump down by the lake? See the line with the S? See, right there, Diane? See by elevation seven twenty-seven? See the little circle? Right there? Yep. And then that, see that piping? It goes all the way up to the road.
Yeah.
That was added to the plan. It wasn't shown on the original, the location of the, the sewer line.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I like full plans. Mr. Jalbert?
Any other, any other questions?
That's why I like full-size plans.
I got them, but I gave them to Jean.
Just brought in a new one.
These will be our conditions?
No.
No.
No, those are just, ma'am, those are, that's from, that's staff reports.
Only the DPW, it was only the DPW, boy.
Only the DPW.
Yes.
That's the only condition.
That we got, uh, today.
Yes. And I just provided that to Lenny.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns?
No other questions, anything?
Okay, motion then?
Oh, all right. You want me, okay. I'll make a motion to, to grant a determination to Glen and Kathleen Ellis for property located at eighty-two Paradise Lane as requested to allow the demolition of an existing home and construction of a new single-family home that is energy-saving with a full foundation and with a two-stall garage. As shown on Plan number two-two-one-zero-eight, site plan dated, uh, six-twenty-nine-twenty-three for Glen G. Ellis, eighty-two Paradise Lane. Revision number five dated ten-fourteen-twenty-three, with the condition that, as stipulated by DPW, that all on-site E-one sewer system piping and pump chambers shall be maintained and protected during construction. Any altering of the system, the contractor shall call the sewer department to schedule an, an inspection. Prepared by Jalbert Engineering, Inc., fifty-four Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., zero-one-five-six-six. The proposal does not intensify or create non-conformities. Approvals granted, provided that all issues concerned and permits deemed necessary by various boards, et cetera, be adhered to and in compliance. Hi, any construction?
Second?
I'll second it.
Any, uh, questions, any discussion? All in favor? Josh? Okay. Unanimous? Good luck.
Have a happy Thanksgiving, Lenny.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Um, let's see. Maybe we can just, um, kinda go over motions?
Sure.
Thanks, Jean.
Yep. So, obviously, it'd be a little different depending on whether it's a special permit or a determination. So, the determination's fairly easy and straightforward. You're going to refer to your, um, Article fifteen and then, of course, the Section three hundred dash fifteen point two, and that's non-conforming uses and structures. So, if it's a, if it's a special permit, you're going to refer to that sub-paragraph A, change in non-conforming uses and structures. And that's the, that's the section for special permit. If it's just a determination, though, you're going to go three hundred dash fifteen point two B, sub-paragraph two. And that one is alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming single- or two-family residential structure where such alteration cannot be made as of right, may be made without the necessity of obtaining a special permit pursuant to subsection A if the zoning board of appeals determines that such alteration will not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. If the zoning board of appeals does not make this determination, the applicant may seek a special permit to subsection A. So, when you're doing just the determination, your only finding that you need to make is that it will not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure, kind of, period. So, in this case, and there's, and there's, there's no absolute right way or no absolute wrong way to do it. I noticed that some members, I think, get a little tripped up when you're trying to list out, you know, the applicant, the name of the plan, the date of the plan, the version of the plan, and it's fine to do it that way if you're able to do it. If not, it's also fine to say, in accordance with the plans and materials submitted, because, don't forget, under the new open meeting law, Janay's minutes have to reflect every single piece of, um, document that was reviewed as part of that, um, approval process. So, you can refer, you can say it that way, and then her minutes have all that. So, you could do it, the way Marge does it is absolutely correct. And then you could also do, for instance, in this one, that I make a motion to grant the determination requested for Glen and Kathleen Ellis for property located at eighty-two Paradise Lane to raise and rebuild the structure as shown on the plans and supporting documentation submitted. And I find that no, the alteration will not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. So, that would be very simple. This one's not a special permit. You're just making that determination. They didn't, um, increase any non-conformities, so it can be just as simple as that. And then any conditions, like Marge just added the conditions. And the way that Marge does it and Diane does it, we all absolutely learn that way because, you know, until about eight years ago or six years ago, we didn't have to list all those documents in the minutes. So, we all became very accustomed to it. We have to do that because otherwise, you know, I don't know what, if I wasn't here, what version did you approve? Oh, was this version four or version three? But now, the minutes will reflect what that latest version was. So, the way, I'll call us, the way us oldies do it is perfectly fine. If it's easier for newer members, we don't necessarily need to add all that because the laws have changed a little bit. And we always know we're going to have that list of documents, so it's, it's easier. If it were, um, take an example, the, the STL. So, the first thing you have to do is make that finding. So, you go back to the same section, the three hundred dash fifteen point two. And I'm, and I will say, I'm still getting used to the new codification of the bylaw. I'm used to the old numbers too. So, that is kind of, you know, it, it even trips me up. I'm still not used to these numbers. I've looked at the other numbers for eighteen years. But, so in this case, for STL, for instance, you would look at that first sub-paragraph A, and that's change in non-conforming uses and structures. And that one says, "A pre-existing non-conforming structure or use may be extended, changed, or altered subject to the issuance of a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. No such extension, change, or alteration shall be permitted unless the zoning board of appeals finds, after a public hearing, that such extension, change, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use." So, in the case of STL... See if I have the application here, so I can give you a quick motion. Not sure where I put my application. Here it is. So, in this case, you could do, um, when you're doing the finding, "I move to find that the application as proposed by STL five oh five LLC for property located at five oh five Main Street will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use." And then you could list your reasons. Um, he's cleaning up an underutilized or, uh, vacant property that's been sitting vacant and unmaintained for many years. The use that's proposed is one that's permitted in the district. Um, the parking lot will not be, um, any more detrimental than the existing parking lot because it will not encroach any further. Um, it's in an area that's developed with similar uses on similar-sized lots. So, any of those things could be your reason for finding. So, in that case, you're finding, you're taking the information from the applicant. Maybe a Butters are here, and you're taking that testimony to make that finding. Is what they're proposing going to be any more detrimental? And so, that's number one. And then if you find it won't be any more detrimental, then you move on to the special permit part. And that would be, you go to, um, Section three hundred dash eighteen point two, sub-paragraph two, special permits. And this one says that applications for special permits for the use of land or buildings as set forth in Part Two, Article Four, or elsewhere in this bylaw, may be made to the Board of Selectmen, the Zoning Board of Appeals, or the Planning Board, as indicated. If no permit granting authority is mentioned, the Zoning Board of Appeals shall be the permit granting authority. The special permit granting authority may authorize the issuance of said special permit in accordance with Mass General Laws forty A, Section nine and seventeen. And that's basically your procedural requirements for your public hearing and your notice and all that. Provided all the requirements are met and provided that, and these are your criteria, that used to be the A through E. So, they're now one through six. So, your first one is, "Such use is not detrimental to the permitted use in the zones in which it's located." And I tried to get back into the habit of putting this in my reports for you, and I did it with the one... did it with the one this evening. So, in this case, if you go to my report, starting on page three, really, page four, if you look at my report on page four, I'm giving you my opinion of how this application meets the special permit criteria. So, A, "Such use is not detrimental to the permitted uses in the zone in which it's located." And I put, "The use is not detrimental to the permitted uses in the zone in which it's located. Artists, live-work studios, and mixed-use developments are all permitted uses within the district. The existing site is within an area that is developed with a variety of businesses and residential uses." And then, B, your next one, "The nature of the operations shall be such that it will not be hazardous or create any danger to public health and safety." And I put, "The proposed new building and parking lot will not be hazardous or create any danger to public health and safety. Parking and pedestrian circulation on-site will be adequate and safe. The police department had no comment or concerns with the proposed use." And then, C, "The use shall be consistent, insofar as practicable, with the comprehensive plan for future development of the area." And I put, "The proposed use is consistent with historic uses on-site and consistent with the zoning bylaw and master plan, which encourages a mixture of uses within this corridor." And then, D, "Provisions for roads and parking areas shall be laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances. The parking lot and connecting driveways," this is my words, "the parking lot and connecting driveways have been reviewed by staff, and no concerns have been noted. A more stringent review will occur during the site plan approval process, where things such as maneuverability, lot striping, and signage will be reviewed and addressed." And then, finally, the location under E, "The location, nature, and height of buildings, walls, fences, and landscaping shall be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development of adjacent land or adversely affect the character of the zone in which it is located." And I put, "It does not appear this proposal will in any way hinder or discourage appropriate development of adjacent land, nor will it affect the character of the zone in which it's located. This proposal is consistent with what was permitted in the district. All landscaping and other site enhancements will be reviewed as part of the site plan approval process. However, improvements proposed will not negatively impact the character of the area." So, really, when you're issuing the special permit, you need to ensure that all these requirements have been met. And so, you all have my report. My report is part of the record. I will try to include that. But as you're taking testimony and you're asking questions, you're kind of coming to those conclusions on your own. So, then, it could be to make a motion to grant the special permit requested by STL 505 LLC to raise and rebuild, and in this case, and repour the southwest, I think it was the southwest corner of the foundation, as proposed on the plans and materials submitted. Or you could list the plan and the plan date if you'd like. Because we find that the proposal meets all the requirements of Section 300-18.2, Subparagraph Two, Special Permits, Criteria One through Six. And then, you can certainly list things in those, or you can say, you can refer back to my report. If you all agree with what I've written, that's your criteria. You might take other criteria. If it's a very controversial one, you want to be really careful in making those findings or stating why you couldn't make those findings, especially if you're choosing not to grant a special permit. What did they not meet? And how did they not meet that? And you would really want to spell that out in your motion as you go through that. And I know I just made it sound even more complicated than it is.
No, I just have one question. A through E are not the findings? Yes.
No, it's a special permit. No, it's a special permit criteria.
Say that again?
It's the special permit criteria.
Well, then, do we really need the finding as a separate motion?
Yes.
No, findings is the first motion.
Findings is the first motion. And it's as simple as what it says in that 15.2. So, go back to, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but the finding, now, the way this bylaw has been reordered and recodified, your finding is, if it's a special permit, you need to find that the extension, change, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming use.
Okay.
That's if it's a special permit. If it's a determination, you only need to find that such alteration will not increase the nonconforming nature of the structure.
Can I get that one? Okay.
May I comment on something? I personally think the other way was the better way, that you went through what was proposed, itemized what was proposed in the application for a special permit, and that is covered, what you have to analyze, in the finding. And I go back to that time we had Mr. Eichmann come in, well, we had fairly new members on the board, and he stressed that, so that we more or less discussed what we're going to do, what is on the application, so that we can find that it meets that criteria.
Oh, absolutely. So, that's your deliberation. That's not your motion. What you asked him was how do you make a motion?
No, I mean, in the finding.
No, the finding is, your finding is that it meets all the special permit criteria, but the finding itself for nonconforming is as simple as it won't be any more detrimental to the area.
No, that is understood.
That's a finding. Yeah, that's a finding, and then, there's the findings that it meets the special permit criteria.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, that it meets the special permit. I mean, it has to be more detrimental. That's the primary thing there.
Right, that's your first finding.
First finding.
And then, the next is your special permit criteria. You need to find it meets the criteria.
If you're covering it anyway, and you're saying you're still finding these things, does it make a difference whether you're saying it first or last, as long as you include it?
Yes, you have to do the finding first.
No, I don't mean the, I know you have to do the finding first.
Okay.
But the clause that it is not more detrimental, does it make a difference whether it's, you say that before you actually do the finding?
That is the finding.
I know, I know that is.
And that has to be done first.
That's...
That's the finding.
Okay.
That it's not more detrimental, or that it doesn't create any new nonconformities in the case of a determination.
Because, see, before, we used to do, we analyzed the criteria and then state that it was not more detrimental, and then proceed to go on to the special permit. That's my recollection.
No, the special permit criteria is its own section in here, the way it's codified.
Yeah, it is its own section. And you're granting it.
Right, but that's not the finding. The finding that's referred to for nonconforming is the statutory finding required under 40A, Section Six.
Yeah, but you know...
And that's the 15.2 section of the bylaw.
Right.
The other is the special permit criteria.
I don't think I'll make them myself.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Know what you're saying? Because that's why I asked that question. But I understand what she's saying now. It's just switched around.
That's what I mean, it's being switched around.
Well, you do, no, you do the nonconforming finding first, that it's no more detrimental. Then, you do the special permit criteria.
No, that's what I'm saying, Jean.
Yeah, you do that second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The actual granting or denial of the special permit gets done second.
Second, right.
Of course. That's not what I was saying.
I'm sorry, then I missed not getting what you were saying.
I was saying, reviewing what used to be under A to E.
That's the special permit criteria, one through six now.
That's, all right, so that's one to six. But it's the same thing, basically.
It's the same thing, it's just renumbered.
That's what I'm saying, it's renumbered.
Yes, it's same thing, just renumbered, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I missed that part.
The articles, everything, what would normally be A to E is now one to six.
One through six, absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to say.
We're both saying the same thing. I just wasn't getting what you were saying.
But the only thing, what I'm saying is, like, the way I always did it, and the way I remember from Mr. Eichmann, was you put that clause at the end of your finding, that it's not more detrimental. And then, you proceed to go with the motion to grant...
The special permit.
Special permit.
Yep, that's exactly what I said. You do the motion on the finding first, and then you do the criteria, right.
No, I'm talking about that clause.
That would be your first motion, right? Yeah.
It's on here, if you look on here.
I know.
I think we're both saying the same thing, Marge.
We're saying the same thing, basically, but we're renumbering things in the order. It's always the finding first, absolutely.
Yes, and then the special permit criteria. Yep, and the only thing that's changed is the numbering of the bylaw.
And we refer to the, who prepared the plans and everything in the actual granting of the permit.
Yes, if you want to reference the full plan, you would do it there, but...
But you really, you don't have to.
You don't have to. You can say, "As shown on the plans and supporting documentation provided." Yeah, yes, either way is appropriate.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think that cleared a lot.
Yeah, it is. But like I said, I remember, because I still have that CD.
Oh, yeah, no, that is how you do it, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't think I helped anything here, but...
No, you did. No, I see where it was, the one to six in the eighties.
Right, it's just, yeah, just renumbered in the bylaw.
Okay.
I can do, like, a little template or something, too.
Yeah, maybe that might be helpful.
If that would help.
Josh, do you have any other questions for Jean, or you kind of, everything makes sense?
Clear as mud.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. But no, I actually think I've followed it. Maybe I can just, I'll restate very quickly, but just from what I was hearing, 300-15.2 is the code section that you would issue the finding under?
Yes.
If there's a special permit required, that's in the other, wow, what the heck was it?
300-18.2, Subparagraph Two.
Okay. And both of those sections basically outline sort of the wording, really, that you need to provide in the motion, and with, obviously, added commentary with why it met each of the sort of criteria.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. That's what I, that was sort of my interpretation of the last two minutes.
That was perfect. That was better said than...
Excellent, excellent. Okay, do we have anything else that we want to go over? I mean, our next meeting, if we have anything, will be December 20th.
Okay.
And then, we have the, don't forget, the Board of Selectmen, Monday.
Monday.
Are you gonna send, once it's official, or you send us something, like, once it's closed?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, everyone. Did you learn something new?
From Monday?
What, Monday, do you mean?
Right.
It is, it's all set 6:30 Monday. Janay just asked out the agendas.
You should have the agenda, I put it on your...
Yes, I have.
Yep, so it's official.
It was on, yes.
And it'll be here, yep.
Else, are we all set? I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?